To declare from the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Call the meeting to order and I consider a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Set.
Thank you. Sherry, we call the roll.
Commissioner Erns.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. Motion carries. Move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I would so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sherry, we call the roll.
Commissioner Erns.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. Move on to our opportunity for public comment. Anybody in the audience that wants to come up and speak, feel free to do so. We'd be limited to five minutes and total public comment of a half hour.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, everyone present today. My name is Joyce Tavett and my address is 46802 292nd Street, Beersford, South Dakota. And I am referring to, I'd like to talk about the feedlot that's on the agenda today. And I think I have a solution. I grew up on a farm. I'm a farm girl. Eggs important. Also, community is important. Church and quality of life. I live over by the Viberg exit and I live next to a feedlot, about a quarter, mile and a quarter away. And I do have some pictures I'd like to show if I'm able to. Okay. Can this be zoomed up at all? Can we make this any bigger, please?
It's going.
A little bit bigger and zoom in. Okay. All right. This is about two and a half miles off the interstate, off the Viberg exit. I'm located about a mile and a quarter straight south of this feedlot. And it's just south of 20,000 cattle, or actually cows, dairy. And I'm going to show you another picture. And I'll explain these a little bit more in detail as they come up. Okay. Okay, this has been about, it started out small. And within five years, it quadrupled. And it's still growing. They're proposing another 8,000 cows. And what I'm trying to show with these pictures, this is the entire feedlot. It extends from this part of the section all the way over to this one, plus they brought in four digesters. And if you can look at this picture, you can see the end of one of the digesters. And then right behind it, on the other section line, is a sister facility. And it just keeps growing. This is a Class A license. Class A is unlimited. We do not want this a mile from Mo Parish Park. That's been there for 150 years. We have outdoor services. We have Vacation Bible School. We have a prayer garden. We have a community Fourth of July that has about 500 people, up to 500 people that attend. It is across the field. And for everyone here who hasn't been there, I do encourage you to go out there. It's literally across the field. You can see the silos of the feedlot from the church. It's close. We're not talking about miles away. And I'd really like to ask a question to the Commissioners and to everyone here that's present, even those that are involved in the feedlot. Would you like this in your neighborhood? Would you like this in your church? Would you like this in your community? So as you make this decision today, really think about what's in your heart. And if this was in your backyard, it's been there for 150 years. And I am all for agriculture. I'm a farm girl. My dad used to raise cattle. I think we have a solution. I think we can work together on this. Leave the feedlot the way it is. My dad used to have about 100 head. He made a living off that. They've got about 1,000 head. Just leave it the way it is and leave our church alone. Let them continue as they have for the last 150 years. I live in a neighborhood that has a feedlot. And believe me, it's not what we want. Please consider this in your own heart if you'd like this in your backyard. And I thank you.
Anyone else want to come up? If not, we'll move on to Commissioner reports. Any Commissioners have reports today?
Oh, you got Tuntland would like to speak.
Good morning.
David Tuntland, 28947474, Beersford, dealing with this feedlot. They want to add another 1,000 head or whatever. I don't know where to start here. There's so many things. I've dealt with manure for 66 years in my life. We ran a grade A dairy. I know more about manure, how it's handled, how it's contained and such. And you really don't want to double the size of this with air quality and manure quality of the area of runoff and such. This is a blue line. It runs from Viberg exit all the way over to this feedlot area. It's a high point where water either goes northeast, northwest, southwest, wherever. It splits. Any runoff from this dairy, or excuse me, from this feedlot will get into the aquifer main streams and everything else. And it's just plain toxic. Now, when they built the first building, did they have Geotech come out and check the compaction level before they poured the floor? How thick is the floor? Is it, if it's eight inches, is it very uniform all the way across? Is it got rebar in it? All cement cracks. All cement will leak. I've talked with contractors. I've worked with cement and with contractors and such. It's just a bad idea to double it. We have air quality. You've got 1,000 head unit there plus the outside cattle. And you double it, you overload the air quality in that area. And it's just, you're close to the church, family reunions are there, probably, I bet you, three months out of the year during the summertime. Pretty bad to have a family reunion when you've got a northwest breeze and it stinks horrible and such. So I've, I gotta see two. Okay. You guys recognize this here, The Big Short? Have you ever seen that movie? It's about Lehman Brothers, Bear Stearns, and the financial crisis of 2008. Do you know what the last comment on that movie was? The next war will be over water. Water. If this is such a good idea to double the size of this, and if the people are from Iowa, build in Iowa. Don't come over to South Dakota. Right now, we're pumping the fourth well at Lewiston Clark. Water, Vermillion, will start up and fill the water tower at Beersford and fulfill the line going over to Sioux County and stuff. Sioux County, Lyon County, their water stinks. Shallow wells are ruined from runoff, from feedlots, hog confinements, pits leaking and everything. If you have a gas station and you have a fuel leak, they dig it all out, they take all the soil away, they put different soil in, and you start over again. Toxic manure, toxic runoff, toxic seepage from these lagoons. There's another outfit called Ramsdale out of Flanders, South Dakota, and they build underlayments for landfills all over the United States. I've got some of their material, not using it as a manure containment, but they can seal up supposedly a landfill so you don't get lead poisoning, paint, or anything else going into the aquifers. They run from, I think, Texas all the way, any place they get calls, they go out there and they put in underlayments for landfills. So the first building that was built, is that pit leaking? We don't know. This one that's proposed, we don't need an extra 1,000 head. Will they be more careful so they don't, you know, have runoff or leakage into the aquifer? I wish you all would take a walk instead of Lake Lakota or Lake Alvin, put on some old tennis shoes, and walk that little creek to the east side. Walk it all the way down for about three miles to Harvey Tweet's place. I'd pay you. But walk in the water. And then I'll want you to talk to me in about two weeks. We'll see what the problem is. Thank you. We don't need this in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make, come on up and make a comment? All right. If not, we'll move on to Commissioner reports. Any Commissioners have reports this All right. We'll move on to regular business. I asked for an executive session this morning Sub 3.
I'll offer you the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Sherry, we call the roll.
Commissioner Erns.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
No.
Commissioner Landy.
Executive session.
I'll so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Sherry.
Who is the second?
Poppins.
Commissioner Erns.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. Move on to item one on our agenda. It's a table item. We've had our public hearing on that. So I don't know, Toby, do you want to read it or do you want to do anything? I don't think you need to. So on that, on the appeal of the decision to approve the conditional use permit to allow an existing classic cattle-concentrated animal feeding operation to expand from 1,000 to 2,000 head on the property, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I make the following motion.
Commissioner Erns, is your microphone on?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a motion. This is a reluctant motion. I'll get into that during the discussion period. But I'll kick off the discussion here by making the following motion that we pass, we approve the application as is for 1,000 additional extra head of cattle with the following conditions. Number one is all of boilerplate conditions that were included as part of the planning commission. But the additional conditions I would add are the following. And those are that the applicant shall notify the Mo Parish Church 48 hours prior to any manure application. The intent of that condition is so that if somebody's having a wedding or a funeral, it's not within 48 hours of when the wedding or funeral or any other important church event has occurred. Nobody wants to have their wedding or funeral or any other important event marred by a manure application. That's completely within the power and control of the applicant to control. Second condition is the applicant will not apply manure within one mile of the Mo Parish Church. The third condition is that the applicant will provide proof to this commission that it has obtained and at all times carries property casualty insurance that shows that they are covered to pay for an environmental, any kind of environmental damage. So you'll have to show proof that if there is some kind of damage to the, not only your property, but to other people's property, you'll have to show that there's sufficient coverage to take care of the damage. That would be my motion, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Value-added agriculture is important to Lincoln County. The more cattle and the more animals we produce here, the more corn and beans and other products that are consumed here. That's good for our local economy and it's good for the people who live and work here. We also need to make sure that value-added agriculture respects family farms and neighbors. Best way that we can respect our neighbors, especially in this instance, is when we put reasonable restrictions around the ability to do value-added agriculture. It's just common sense that we want to be good neighbors. Some of the previous conditions we had talked about unfortunately may not be within the power and control of a county commission to pass. And so what I would say to the neighbors are, there's just some things under the law that this county commission can't do. And we need to follow the law. We're always concerned about runaway government and government that runs outside of its left and right lanes. And to those people who would say, well, you should just vote no, I have a very simple message for those of you who should say the commission should just vote no. It is very likely that if we voted no, and this is not some kind of admission against interest, this is my opinion, that if we voted no, you give the applicants the ability to sue this county commission in circuit court, and then guess what? You don't get any conditions at all. That's where I'm coming from today, and that's why I make the motion I do.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Other Commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Erns, your points, I think, on the application would go a long ways when communication between an entity such as a church and the provider communicated well. I think that's an easy thing to work around. As far as adding the bonding, I think that it would be appropriate for us to incorporate that into our rules for all. I'm a little concerned to be a little arbitrary on this one. I don't know of a reason why this entity, without that being part of our regular rules, would be imposed on that. But totally support on the other aspects of it. Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could just answer.
Yeah, go ahead because I think there's, I didn't think we were talking about a bond.
Yeah, this is a good discussion to have, and I appreciate Commissioner Poppins's inquiry. So I did backtrack off the bond issue. I did incorporate as a condition here liability insurance policy, something that for the most part, most applicants carry anyway. But assuming that you probably meant insurance rather than bonding.
Yes.
That's my assumption. My response to that would be, it's been a number of years since we last considered a Class A. And we've had new Commissioners come onto the commission since then. And we have, we're new people and we have new ideas. And there's always going to be that churn in democracy where people bring new ideas to the forefront for consideration, and this is one of them. And yes, it is new, and it is a good discussion to have moving forward about maybe we need to incorporate that. I've seen other counties around the state that do that, and I would agree. But from the point of view that I would change my position that any Class A should be able to operate without an insurance policy, that's not the case. So insofar as it relates to me, I would require all moving forward to have that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sherry, we call the roll.
Commissioner Erns.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. Motion carries. Move on to item two on our agenda. It's a public hearing.
Sherry, you going to read that? Or Toby, are you going to handle it?
Nope, I'll read it.
Okay, go ahead.
Public hearing to consider petition to vacate the following described highway. Starting point, Highway 11, to be vacated, parcel ID 15064N001. Ending point, parcel ID 24056643040, owned by East River Power Corp. Parcel ID 15064N001 was created by Temple Adlots, 1A, 1B, donating 50 feet for future 93rd Street adjoining parcel. ID 2411100100 did not donate 50 feet to create 100 feet of roadway for future 93rd Street.
That's good.
The future 93rd Street was moved to the north due to wetlands and traffic concerns on Highway 11. The request for parcel ID 15064N001 land to be returned to donating
So we received the petition from Robert Hoffman for this. The petition is in the briefing packet.
I just have a question. On our agenda item, is there a Scrivener's error? Is it Highway 111?
In the petition, it says Highway 11.
Yeah, it is probably 111.
That's, that's.
It is 111?
Yeah.
Clerical error, or can we just?
Yeah, it's a clerical error, but.
Can we just correct that at this point versus having to go through the whole process because of it?
That'd be a question for our state's attorney's office.
Yeah, should we consider Scrivener's error?
Thank you.
Thank you. So can I get a motion to correct the Scrivener's error and change it to Highway 111?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second by Erns. Sherry, we call the roll.
So the motion was who?
Poppins.
Poppins and Erns.
Just to make the correction.
Sorry, yep. Commissioner Erns.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. All right.
Is the petitioner here?
Yes.
Want to come out up, sir?
Yes, Robert Hoffman, 520 South Prairie Avenue in T-South Dakota.
Thank you, Robert. What are you, what are you doing? Say what you want.
We would like, so there's an easement for the road on the north side of the property, future 93, 93rd Street. And the property to the north, Nine Mile Creek Housing Edition, did not donate 50 yards or 50 feet to complete the road. They moved the road to the north. So we'd like, since that road's never going to go in because they're putting housing up against the property line, we'd like that land vacated back to the two pieces of property that gave the 50 feet originally.
Save me some time. Everyone signed off that's adjacent to the road for approval of doing that, then?
Myself and RBS submitted the application. So RBS is also on the signed application.
Are there any adjacent landowners opposed to this? Or did you have, I know you can't speak for them.
I can't speak for.
You may have had some discussions.
I can't speak for the landlord to the north. We could have gone through the city or the county, and we chose to go through the county. The city is aware of it, and they were going to submit the process. But since the land was originally donated to this county, we chose to go through the county versus the city. The property to the north is held by the city of T, or is in the city of T's jurisdiction. So A and T Rentals is the owner to the west that would receive property back also. There's two lots there.
Any other questions?
I have a question for staff.
Yeah, go ahead.
Toby, have we had any communication?
Toby, do you have a microphone?
Morning, Toby. Is there any communication officially from T on this at all?
Yes.
And they are aware of it?
They're supportive.
No, perfect. That's what we need to know. I would move to, oh, it's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing.
I'll hold up.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Hoffman? All right. Anybody here to speak in favor of the petition to vacate other than Mr. Hoffman? Anybody here to speak in opposition? If not, consider a motion.
I would gladly offer that motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sherry, we call the roll.
Commissioner Erns.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Landy.
Yes. Motion carries. Move on to item three on our agenda. It's a second reading.
Second reading in public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota. Rezoning property legally described as north one half, northeast one quarter, except Long Track 1 and the Meadow at Spring Creek, Section 27, Township 100 North, R49 West, Springdale Township from A1 Agriculture District to a RR Rural Residential District, and omitting the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The planning commission vote to recommend approval failed, 0 to 7.
Good morning. Toby Brown with County Planning. As was just stated, this is an application to rezon approximately 43 acres from the A1 Agricultural District to the RR Rural Residential District. This property is located about 1,200 feet to the west of the Spring Creek Golf Course. Subject property is undeveloped, utilized primarily for agricultural production at this time. In 2021, the owner of the property did petition the county to transfer the two eligibility's that were on this parcel to essentially the driving range, it's just to the northeast of the property there. The applicant for this is John Schwartzley, and the property owner is Lori Long. Subject property to the north across County Highway 106 is developed with rural residential properties and some agricultural residential properties. Directly to the east is an adjoining subdivision. To the west is undeveloped agricultural, and to the south is undeveloped agricultural. The purpose for this application is the applicant is intending to subdivide the property in approximately 30 lots. 29 lots would be buildable. The 30th would be a detention pond, would rezon the property for rural residential, single-family development.
Toby, do you have a parcel number for this?
Yep. I don't have it. I'm here right now, but we'll go back to this here. Parcel number is 149271010.
You said 149?
27 and then 1010.
Thanks.
And so staff report, staff did identify or find that this application was not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Again, the comprehensive plan identifies its goals and. Again, the comprehensive plan identifies its goals and policies, the maintain of the building eligibility or the one per quarter quarter, as well as, I did include in this, in the, uh, agenda, the, uh, future land use map, uh, which identifies the property as a future agricultural property. As was stated, the planning commission did concur with staff findings that this application is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, and with that, we have to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time.
Toby, a couple different questions. Number one, at the last, the last time this issue came in front of the commission, uh, we denied it. Did the applicant make any changes to his plan, his or her plan? Since we denied the last plan, did they make any adjustments or changes to it this time?
Uh, did the applicant, I think, went a little further with what's required for the drainage from a preliminary plan requirement. Uh, but no, I, I don't believe there's any substantial changes to lot and block layout of the proposed development.
Well, and we're, well, I'll let them discuss what drainage issue changes they made, but did they submit any of those changes to you?
Yes, and I included those in the agenda.
Okay. Um, that's the only question I have right now.
Okay.
Toby, you reiterated that there is already a rural residential area to the north and east of it currently?
Correct. Those were rezoned by the county in 1996 and 1997. Um, since then, the county's updated the future land use map since that point.
And what's the date on the future land use map?
2011.
So it's 10 years old?
Toby, I did have a second question as an alibi. Um, what was the, uh, driving reason at the Planning and Zoning Commission, if there was any, in regard to discussion amongst the planning and zoning commissioners, as to the reason they denied the application?
Um, so I think two parts to that is, I think they concurred with staff findings on the land use part of it. But of course, all of our rezon applications turn into drainage issues and drainage concerns. So I think ultimately that was another reason why concerned.
Well, it, yeah, and I think what I'm trying to draw out here is that when you have a comprehensive plan that's over 10 years old, you run the risk or the potential that every new development of this nature is going to be in violation of the comprehensive plan, right?
Correct.
So we kinda set that one to the side because we know that one's coming, given the date of the plan. So I wanna zero in on the second objection, which seems to be the more kind of salient one here. What was the discussion or the concern amongst the planning and zoning commissioners with regard to the drainage issues?
Uh, so two parts to that is, I think, was the concerns from the neighbors. There was quite a bit of testimony, which I, there will be today as well, with their concerns about the proposed, um, layout of the subdivision as far as detention, discharge of that. Um, and then there's a concern with, I think, density in general. Um, this proposal would connect to the existing subdivision to the east, and I, I know those neighbors are vocally concerned about additional traffic and concerns, um, just in general with having additional density in that area.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is the applicant present?
Yes.
You wanna come on up, sir? Just, uh, go ahead and present your rezon request and tell us whatever you'd like us to know.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I guess the first thing...
I'm sorry, your name and address?
My name is Gibb Gansho. I live at Park Place, T-South Dakota. What I just heard, uh, was kind of off the notes that I made and what I was gonna talk about, but the, the drainage issue, with the help of Toby and, and, um, the hired consultants, the engineering consultants from Minnesota, we were told and we were, we, that we would get the preliminary plan approved. And I want to invite our engineers up here to explain that we've made tremendous progress in the drainage issues, that I know that Joel was very concerned about, and he was very concerned about it, and that we came back this month, you know, six months later to discuss what we've done, and we've done a tremendous amount. We've talked to people, uh, we've met with the homeowners numerous times, taken them on field trips, and, um, so I'm a little disappointed in the fact that the drainage wasn't addressed better or more thoroughly by Toby this morning. So when you talk about the zoning use, don't we wanna talk about drainage? Or is this the first part, the zone use, and the second part will be drainage? Because I don't wanna leave here thinking that we did nothing with the drainage, because it's, it, in my opinion, within Toby's and within the engineers from Minnesota, we've done everything that we possibly could at this point for preliminary plan to get the approval for that. The land use is a whole different subject. So, we can talk about land use right now and zoning, or we can talk about drainage, because I don't want to leave here without having the opportunity to talk about the changes that we made with the drainage and to make the other landowners to our, to the east more comfortable with what we've done. Our engineering basically removes any flooding issues that that east side has, just for us to do what we have to do to make the commission happy. And, you know, I could sit here and talk numbers, but we've reduced the, any opportunity for drainage to go to the east down to pretty much where it was, or less because of what we've done with our grading and engineering.
You, and you indicated in your first comments that you were told initially that this was no problem. Is that...
What was no problem?
Your plan.
We were told in the last meeting we had with Toby and the engineers from Minnesota that our preliminary plan would pass today based upon the, the research and the changes we made with the drainage. And I'd like to discuss that with you, if you have the time. And I, I need to discuss it.
We're gonna have two, we're gonna have two hearings, you know?
Today?
Yep.
Okay.
Back to back, back to back to each other.
Okay.
So, you can tell us what you wanna know, and then if you have something to add in the second hearing, I mean, we can listen to the whole thing.
Okay, that'd be great. So, when you talk about land use, and what Toby had said is that to the east and to the north, we have the same use. We have one acre lots, and, um, we believe that the area is, the use for the area is, meets the character of the neighborhood. We've got one acre lots all around us, and the farmer to the south, we fixed the drainage so it doesn't go into his spot. The, the land is actually, uh, growing alfalfa. They're not farming it for corn or for beans. So it gets shaved two, three times a year. And, um, so it's, it's, you know, I, I wanna say that it's continuous what's there. It meets the character of the neighborhood. You know, the gas is already in the ground there, not for us, but it's next door. We've already talked to the water company, Lincoln Rural Water, the power company. There's not gonna be any issues with that. But what I'd like to do is, if I could have this, can we look at that real quick?
Sure. The camera up above, if you just put it directly below.
There you go.
There you go.
So, is there any way we can kinda scan out of that? So we can get the whole thing on there?
You may have to move that around a little bit.
Okay.
Or else.
I got it.
There we go.
Okay. Almost a year ago, when we were in front of you guys, we really didn't get a chance to talk about the drainage issues or the land use. You guys asked us to come back in six months. Well, in the last six months, we've discovered and made a lot of progress in terms of the area and what we have found out. As you can see right here, I put this map together, and it looked, it tells me that what parcels were ag and which parcels had been rezoned to R1, or rural residential, and the dates and the acreages. So you can see, down here, this woman, I can't remember her name, you approved in 2021, 159 acres. This, 2019, 44 acres. 2020, 18 acres. This one here, I can't read it, but over here, 2019, another approval for rezoning. And in my opinion, because I know the area very well, it's been in my family forever, those, those parcels, excuse me, these are kind of out in the middle of nowhere. And, um, we believe that where ours is located, which is right here, is surrounded by the same type of houses. So the use that we're gonna, that we're proposing is the same as what's there now. And so, it's, it's, it just, I can't understand why that if you rezoned these other areas that aren't attached, why you wouldn't give us the opportunity to rezon our little 43 acres that we're gonna build 29 houses on? And, um, I just believe that it meets the character of the area. The use is the same. We're not changing anything. It's gonna beautify that area, and we need more housing in Sioux Falls or to Lincoln County for residents who don't wanna live in the city. And I believe that it's my job, or our job at Schwartzley Construction, to inform you, the commission, that this project meets the character of the area and to provide housing in Lincoln County, South Dakota. And, um, I, I guess this picture tells a ta, a thousand tales, is that it's right smack dab in an area that's prime for development and rezoning. So that's really what I'm thinking, and what we're all thinking.
Commissioners have any questions? If not, is there anyone here who would like to come up and speak in favor of the application?
That's gonna be the next round. Right? We'll talk drainages next?
We will. We will.
We will. Um, you'll have an opportunity to address it twice.
Good. I wanted to use those opportunities.
This is Pat Swayback and Brad from JSA. Done a tremendous job for us, and, and we believe that what you'll find is gonna meet the criteria and make you guys feel comfortable about what we're trying to accomplish here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Pat Swayback with JSA Engineers. I've talked to you a time or two about this development, and I appreciate the opportunity to go over it a little bit more and go over it again, and hopefully, uh, address all of the drainage concerns and explain the drainage plan and, uh, answer any questions about it. Regarding the preliminary subdivision plan itself, is this, is this part about the preliminary plan or the rezon?
Uh, the first item on the agenda for...
Is the rezon.
Is the rezon itself. That's the, that's the item we're on.
Okay.
So that has more to do with the use.
Okay, 'cause we did make some changes to the preliminary plan, but Toby was correct in not talking about that. That's the next item on the agenda.
I think if you're talking to us about the drainage issues on the rezon issues, I mean, it's not gonna hurt to talk about those things.
About the preliminary plan?
Uh, correct.
Okay. Well, the drainage, I wanna talk about the drainage, and to start off, uh, we did do more work since the last meeting. Um, and also, I, I wasn't able to be here. I, I introduced it just myself, introduced just myself. Um, also with me...
I'm Brad Letchard, JSA. Um, Silver Creek Circle in Sioux Falls. Um, yeah, I was in charge of the drainage plan, and I modeled the existing and the proposed drainages with a Rainon Grid 2D model that we can see. Here are the results of the existing drainage, which matches the Lincoln County drainage plan pretty spot on. So we were able to know that we were starting with the current concerns of the drainage. And, you wanna go through it?
I just wanted you to know that Brad's here. Uh, Brad was here in March at the previous hearing, and, and I believe there wasn't a whole lot of questions about drainage at that hearing. Um, it was, apparently it was denied for other reasons. I did read through the minutes, and there wasn't much discussion or consideration of the drainage during that last hearing. Regarding this modeling that Brad has done on here, we've explained this, and regarding uh, what we've done since the last meeting, uh, Toby did send us comments from, uh, both IMAG, which used to be Clark Engineering, the county's engineer, and then also from STANTEC, the, the Lincoln County's hired, uh, subconsultant in, in, with the expertise in drainage. And so we received those comments, and we responded to those comments. The STANTEC engineer wanted to, a, a higher view to look at upstream and, I'm sorry, the downstream properties from, uh, our subdivision to the east and to the north, to look at the downstream properties, whether they had capacity for the conveyance of the flows from our development. Uh, we've maintained, um, from the very beginning and still do today, that the peak runoff rates from this development won't be as high as they are today in an agricultural use. But still, we took a look at the downstream, um, subdivisions, the downstream properties as, as requested or directed. And we took that on our own initiative. Uh, the developers said, yes, let's do that. And part of that was to look at the ditches to the east and the culverts underneath the driveways to see if they were large enough and in good enough condition to handle the flows that would be generated from our development. We did that. Uh, we created, we updated our, our printouts to show, um, more land area to the east and to the north. On this first page, D1, this shows, this is our attempt to model the existing drainage based on the existing contours, the land elevations present on the properties, to see what the results are in our computer modeling program. And they produce these results. Uh, the dark blue is, is, that's the, the, the biggest area that's flooded during a 100-year rain event. And these raw results, we took a look at what Lincoln County, what John Peters has on the GIS website for Lincoln County flood maps. And as Brad was alluding to, they matched. They lined up very well.
So what changes did you make?
Yep.
To your, to your drainage plan?
The, I don't think we made any drainage changes. Did we make any drainage plan changes?
No. The changes were really, we didn't make any changes, but we expanded our...
The view.
The view, and so we could get a better idea for the neighbors to the east of what the drainage will look like now versus after proposed construction. So this one might be a little hard to see. So this one is existing drainage. Here's our, our site, and here's the neighbors to the east, and the neighbors to the north. And you can see there's, there's a lot of water. So I understand their concerns with drainage. So we addressed those drainage concerns during design, and this next view is the water after our proposed. You can see the blue is virtually gone, because...
Okay, so what specifically are you doing to manage the drainage?
We have two detention ponds that are being constructed on the site to, to manage the drainage. And so, Colin right here, we, we talked to Colin, and we went through it, and we walked it, the landowner, and just to tell him that the existing drainage will not change in his area.
Did you change the size of the detention?
No, the sizes...
Did you change the size of the detention ponds?
Nope. Nope, the sizes have not changed.
So there's been no changes made?
Correct.
Okay.
This sheet that Brad passed over fairly quickly, but I want to look at, it does show both the existing and the proposed drainage conditions. And if you can see, the lighter blue is what floods currently in a 100-year rain event. And with the addition, with the development of this subdivision and the addition of these two detention ponds, the darker blue is what computer modeling says would flood in a 100-year rain event post-development. We believe that's a, it's a major improvement, you know, especially for this area here, reduces the flooding there significantly. The other places downstream to the east and to the north, the changes are more subtle, but they're still reductions. They're not increased, they don't increase, they decrease.
Toby, at what point would we be looking at the actual dimensions and depth and everything of these retention ponds? I mean, that's a little premature right now, is that fair to say? Okay, okay, thank you.
I very much appreciate that, that comment because normally there's not this much scrutiny and in-depth consideration of drainage during a preliminary subdivision plan. And absolutely, we're doing what we can to address those concerns and we would certainly take care of any during final plan development and design, which is the next step. We have to, we have to meet the Lincoln County final plan requirements, which we will do those also. And at our meeting with Toby a couple of weeks ago, Toby indicated that, that our drainage plan will meet Lincoln County final plan requirements. So that's encouraging.
Does any of the commissioners have any questions regarding the land use issue?
When we're, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I think the, the parties have gone above and beyond to try to reassure ourselves that they're addressing the drainage part of it. Still, we're at the point of a discussion that is limited or should be limited, but uses information to what is the best use of this, this property for now and in the future. We are operating on an extremely old comprehensive plan, which in my conversation with our planning director, he hopes to have the resources to facilitate studying and developing a new plan. That being said, the planning commission and the staff has repeatedly said the land use under our existing plan, it does not meet it. And I think that's a lot of the determination of why it's been denied in the past. If the board and as Commissioner Aaron's indicated, politics comes in, new people come, new decisions will be made based on what their beliefs are. I think we're at a crossroad that needs to really develop that plan before we start trying to anticipate what that plan will be. So those are my comments. I do applaud them for really, I believe, trying to reassure us that if we do rezone it, that the drainage will not be an issue. So I appreciate that, but it still refers back to a land use question at this time. So thank you.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to wrap up with?
Yes, thank you. I think on the previous staff report, Toby had said that there are wetlands on this property and, and that's according to the preliminary plan and that's not the case. There are no wetlands on this property and there has been a delineation done and there was no wetlands found.
Thank you. Gentlemen, anything else you'd like to say to wrap up? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak in favor of the application? Anyone here to speak against the application for rezone? If not, I'd consider a motion.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, all right.
My name is Owen Postma. I don't have a map, but I'm 27097 Prairie Hills Trail, Vice President of the HOA over there. If I go into the next part of the conversation, just please stop me. My observations, this is agricultural land, but it's, it's very obvious it's alfalfa. There's a reason for that because it's wet. From my conversations with other people, I'm under the impression that this plan would need to show how it doesn't impact the other HOAs. He reiterated that, well, all these other ones were approved, but as you noticed, none of those had two other HOAs or five other, however you want to look at it, in the area. I have a waterway in my backyard. They were interested in meeting with me to calm my fears. I am directly north, as you could see, they looked at all the water east, but they did not highlight anything about what they had done to examine north of the rail, the road. You can, when we get into the discussion about where the water's going to go, I would just like to say, insurance modeling is having a hard time keeping up with 100-year events because why? They're every five-year events now. I don't think it's fair to assume that something is a one-year or every 100-year event when it's probably going to be more likely due to climate change and other things. Their backup plan, if this retention pond overfills, is to flood the county ditch. That county ditch would then seep across the road to my property and it would impact all the properties east of me. These properties are petitioning the HOA to put in drainage tile the way it is near the ditch so that they can get water into the HOA or the individuals who already had water problems lines to kick it to Spring Creek. This HOA is just trying to trap it all because they don't have anybody's permission or they don't want to spend the money to get it to where it needs to go, which is Spring Creek, to my knowledge. They're just trying to trap it there and hope that a 100-year event doesn't happen fairly quickly. I don't find that as a solution. I find that as just putting a Band-Aid on something that just is waiting to fail. I tried to make some notes, the overflow bothers me. I mean, I have the waterway, you know, some of it's going to go there, but that ditch isn't angled all that well. It's not all going to get to my property. My property is already boggy. I've had erosion into my waterway already this year. I don't see a way how it wouldn't have worse. And I just, everybody in the neighborhood, and I can't speak for everyone, but the guy to the south doesn't want the water, the people to the east don't want the water, I'm to the north, I don't want the water. There's a reason why everybody doesn't want water. I mean, if we were talking earlier today about how water is such a valuable resource, why does everybody around them not want their water? Because it's wet. It's just wet. I think that's it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Do I respond to this?
Um, not, not quite yet. Anybody else want to come up?
Colin Adama, 47975 Middle Ark Street, Harrisburg. I had a whole bunch of notes written up too, but I will not read them all, but I think Commissioner Aaron's summary, I guess I just, as a critical challenge plus one on that, I had re-watched all the history of these to refresh myself back from August and then in March and that too. And just those challenges of bring the right plan, make, keep this a great place to live. We love living out here. We like the quiet, we love the peace, so road, those kinds of things too. So as you consider this first vote of land usage, keep that in mind too and the challenges of the process. So I don't think I had anything to add, but just kind of a plus one on Commissioner Aaron's first comments from there. So thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Chad Larson, 27115 Prairie View. I am one of the properties just to the east of the 43 acres. Can we show the map that I have under the camera, please? This is one of the proposed maps. And one of the things I want to call out here that I'm not entirely sure about is you can notice here, there is a drain tile right back here in the field currently. According to this map, this relocation of the drain tile is going to bring it closer to our properties, right in line with the property lines. This is not my property, not my direct backyard, but this is. If you've been around drain tiles long enough, if you have an intake, you know, the little orange things in the fields, you're not going to put that on a high spot, you're going to put that on the low spot. And my fear here is those, those networks, you, those are the weak spots in the network. So what, what this map is telling me, what this, what this relocation of the drain tile is telling me is that we're going to move the water problem closer to our properties and not alleviate any of the problem. And I echo what everyone has said, this, this area is wet, as I understand it. It has been planned for, it has always been in the plan for this to be developed on some level, but it's my understanding that it, it didn't happen in the past because of the issues that we're seeing right now. And those issues haven't changed. And I think that a lot of, we're set up here, we've, we want the drainage plan to reflect what's changed, but nothing has changed. And I'll make one more comment about the rezoning. Gib made the comment that, you know, people don't want to live in town. Now, keep in mind that people have also purchased the properties where they live because of the location, just like someone who, you know, built on Spring, Spring Creek Golf Course doesn't want a campground to be there out there front, with, front door. Some of the people who have purchased properties along this did it because it is an agricultural area today. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, if not, do you, sorry, you said you wanted to make a follow-up comment to something? I'll give you that opportunity.
Not to be combative, but just that the plan that Craig was just talking about.
Chad.
Chad, sorry. If you read what it says about the drain tile, the drain tile is going to be disconnected and moved. We're not going to use that drain tile, period. We know it's at a low spot. Lauren Long put it in there to drain some of the water out to get away from their, their project. They have an extensive drain tile program in their neighborhood because of the lack of engineering back in the day, bless his heart. We're going to improve their neighborhood because of what we're doing to keep the water from going there. In terms of Owen's comments about the detention pond, the way that we've, you can talk about it too, the way we engineered this detention pond, the way it's going to release water in a 100-year event where it comes to, it's never going to come to the top, by the way. It'll start to release and it's going to release a lot slower and a lot longer. So it's not going to have or create any erosion in his land. By the way, and I forgot to mention this, his neighbor was here in the original hearings and his pond was drying up. Well, guess what? Owen and that gentleman paid money to install a well so they could pump water out of the ground to put water into the pond. So there's not going to be any issue. We've addressed that issue with the other gentleman that's not here today. I drove Owen around yesterday for a couple of hours showing him the detention ponds that we built, that John has built. There's not, none of that's going on. We don't just build projects where we can impact our neighbors. We want to make sure that it's all thought about, it's done correctly, we've hired JSA. So those two comments are not correct. There's not a drain tile in there, there ever will be, and there won't be an erosion into his property.
Thank you.
It's not going to leach underneath the street, none of that's going to happen. You want to say anything?
I would just reiterate what John's saying, you know, and talk again about the purpose of a detention pond is to, is to capture the runoff and to release it at a, at a controlled rate. And so that's what this pond will do. It'll just, it'll release the storm water at an equal or less than rate that flows today. So the only change he, anybody north or east will see is that the water doesn't come as fast.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to close testimony on item three on our agenda. Consider a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I want to make a motion that we looked at this property and I have just one statement, if not now, when. If you look at this and we've talked about its best use, understand the drainage, understand all the issues that individuals have, but on the other hand, we're talking about rezoning this particular piece of property. And I know that we're looking at a comp plan that's over 10 years old. And as Commissioner Poppins has indicated, when and if we ever get to remodel it, I'm sure that we're going to make some drastic changes on these things because what was 10 years ago isn't today. So consequently, looking at that, looking at it's surrounded on two sides by housing developments, I'd move for approval on that and let discussion follow. But my motion is to approve the rezone.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I'd just like to say I, I do believe in the science and I do believe that the particular retention ponds and areas to control the drainage will be effective. And there's already a rural residential area to the north and east already.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have a discussion they'd like to make?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think if we're being intellectually honest with ourselves, this property is eligible to be rezoned as rural residential. I mean, we're looking at if, here's the statistic that's thrown around Lincoln County right now. If the Spring Creek area were its own community, it would be the fourth largest city in Lincoln County. There's a lot of people who live out there and it's a mixed use, rural versus urban. And there was no central planning used when those houses were put out there. Somebody just came to this commission and said, hey, can I turn that farm ground into a housing complex, a housing division? And that's how it starts. The problem we face today though, and we can get into this more in the second issue, is because of that lack of urban planning, we now have these water issues. Unfortunately though, when we're considering, considering a motion to rezone, we can't attach conditions to it. We can't say you need to do A, B, C, and D. You just have to decide, does the proposed or intended use consistent with the comprehensive plan? And in this instance, of course, that's, that's the fiction here because the comprehensive plan was developed over 10 years ago. But if we are being intellectually honest with ourselves, we would probably have to say, this piece of land, if looked at in isolation, is a place where you could build rural residential housing. There's no doubt about that. The real issue here in this case is, are their plans adequate? And I'm not going to answer that question, not going to state my answer to what I think that is right now. But this is just the vote on the rezone. We'll get into the subdivision issue here right away, whether this passes or not, so.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, comment?
Go ahead.
On the surface, this looks like a logical place to consider a rezone, absolutely. As any parcel in the county has the right to be looked at for appropriate. And everyone's recognizing that our comp plan is, is probably out of date. Serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission, we would, and I'm going to speak for myself, but I think it's the consensus of the Planning and Zoning Board that we encourage us to direct to do a new comprehensive plan. But that being said, we don't know what that plan will say. It may or may not say that this is the logical thing to look at. And I encourage us to fix the problem versus, versus trying to anticipate what the fix may be. Because if this is logical, what are, what's the criteria that makes this logical? So that all know what the playing field is. So that's, that's the only comment I have is, I think if we were going to take the liberty of, of looking at things independent of the comprehensive plan, this seems to be logical. The same thing is, we still have rules that we are supposed to be using as guidelines and by our own staff admission. The same thing is, we still have rules that we are supposed to be using as guidelines and by our own staff admission. It doesn't meet our current requirements, so that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair, you call a roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We'll move on to item four on our agenda. It's a public hearing.
Public hearing for a resolution in Lincoln County, South Dakota, approving the preliminary subdivision plan of Long Meadow Estates at Spring Creek addition on the property legally described as north one half, northeast one quarter, except Long Track One and the Meadow at Spring Creek. Section 27, Township 100 North, R 49 West. Springdale Township, the Planning Commission vote to recommend approval failed two to five.
Good morning, Ken. So this is a corresponding application to the rezone application. This application proposes, again, 29, 30 lot development, counting the detention pond on the facility. Planning Commission staff did recommend denial of this application primarily because it was not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission did likewise on a two to five vote. This application, I think there was some confusion in the previous testimony. So for preliminary plan application, there are standards within the subdivision ordinance, primarily lot and block layout. And drainage is really associated with showing the, the current flows and then proposed detention areas. It's not a full drainage analysis yet. And so the applicants did try to submit revised applications to identify that. Our drainage consultant, myself, said that wasn't sufficient. They haven't shown us adequate information that this is not going to be an impact to downstream landowners as of yet. As they correctly stated, that will be part of the final subdivision plans. The final subdivision plans are approved administratively by the county. So again, this application meets the checklist for a preliminary plan requirement. It can be approved by you, but it does not, again, meet the comprehensive plan. The Plan Commission recommendation is denial of this application. With that, we have to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time.
Anybody have questions for staff?
Thank you.
Is the applicant here wish to say anything? I guess just kind of to move things along, and counsel can tell me if I can't do this. But I'd like to incorporate all of the prior testimony in our last public hearing for use in this public hearing so that we don't need to repeat everything. Can I do that?
Yes. It's a different, yes, you can incorporate all the.
We can take notice of all of that, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So get us out of here.
Yeah.
Thank you, by the way.
Go ahead.
Appreciate it. So as we move forward, it's our absolute intention to work with Toby and his crew and with the county, the engineers to take our preliminary plan to the next level of the final plan. Actually, what Pat said earlier is that we've spent a tremendous amount of time bringing it to the, pretty close to the final plan just based upon the information that we got from the consultants. We've done, we've done the, the downfall, or whatever you call the.
We looked at downstream conveyance.
Yeah. So we've got all that done already. We just didn't talk about it at this point. We've, as you can see, we've already put the roads in going to the west and to the south. That was asked for us by us, by the consultants. There was a number of things that we addressed and changed to bring us further and closer to the final plan. We've, this has been a long road for us. We've worked with Terry at the Road Guy, we've worked with Toby and his people, the consultants, and they've all been very supportive of us. And we're looking forward to continuing that relationship and complying with everything that has to do with making this a wonderful project for Lincoln County and the neighbors. The neighbors have been great. It went from no way to, well, let's do this, and that there's some good ideas. And so we've been working together with them in terms of when construction starts, we'll make sure nobody goes on Meadowlark. There's a lot of things that we're planning on doing that we will talk about when we get together for the, the next meeting and whatever that may be. And like I said, Toby's been great about working with us. And we'll work with the county.
I wanted to add, since the last time this preliminary plan was presented, we have removed the second connection to Highway 106. Meadowlark Court on the previous application was VEDA Avenue, and it connected to Highway 106. And that was a request that, to eliminate, a request or a requirement to eliminate that second access to the highway. So that's been changed on this plan. Now that's, that's just a curve.
You can't see it with that.
Yep. On the lower left corner, there, there was also a request or a requirement to provide a hard connection to the adjoining land to the west and to the south. And so those now are shown as public right of ways, streets that would be able to connect and provide connectivity to the adjoining lands to the west and to the south. So those are a couple of changes I wanted to be sure that you were aware of on the preliminary plan. And they were at the request of IMEG.
Anybody have questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
I understand that IMEG makes some of these requests. But if we're showing a deep commitment to want to work with the citizens as opposed to wanting to make the engineering company happy, those are two distinct concepts, right?
Yes.
And so is there a willingness to want to close off Meadowlark Street on your part?
You know, we, like I said, we've been working closely with Colin, and I know that he and the folks over there have a meeting with you guys, I think in June, to propose to close it. You know, I think it's just out of our, our wheelhouse. I, I don't think that, you have 29 lots. More than half of them are going to exit up to 106. So I don't think there's going to be a tremendous amount of traffic. We've even talked about installing speed bumps to keep people's speed down. But when I, when I look at what the engineers asked us to do with the access to the south and to the west, then that's a whole different ballgame. Because if that happens, let's say that the farmer sells his land and there's going to be 500 houses there. You know, I don't know. I don't, I, I can't answer that. But we would certainly work with Terry or whoever we need to work with in the, in the street department, Toby. If they're engineers, I, I think that there were some things that we believe the engineers were asking for that were probably weren't necessary, according to Pat, that didn't fit the jurisdiction of South Dakota versus Minnesota. And they got into a little bit of, I can't remember what Toby called it, but we, we've been very, very, very conscientious in answering their questions. And he actually flew, or the guy drove in and met with us last week. And it was, it was very positive and very beneficial.
Excuse me, Joel. Appreciate the comment about responding to IMEG's request. And then maybe that's taken out of context. We're here to do what is required by Lincoln County and, and what's, we want to work with Lincoln County. We want to work with the neighbors. And, and that was simply a comment from Lincoln County's engineer. So yes, definitely, we want to listen and respond and, and be cooperative. Regarding the, the drain tile, we're, we're open to, to leave it where it is. If that's, we didn't know that that was a concern, and, and definitely we, we want to be responsive.
So you'd have no objection then to turning this plan into a no-access point on Meadowlark Street, closing that off?
Well, I, I don't think we would have any objection to it. We're, we're, you know, our goal here is to get a preliminary subdivision plan approved, not to, to, to agree to change it again and come back again. And, and we've been told we, we do, you know, I think that the municipality, the government of Lincoln County, at some points, we can have Toby answer this, they do want connectivity between subdivisions. We didn't have a connection to the west and to the south. And that was a requirement that precipitated was that you do want connections to the, to the adjoining land to the west and to the south. So the connection to the east, we, we've said time in the past at previous hearings, we're okay with having that connection and we're okay with not having that connection. We're okay. If you can tell us what you'd like, we, we'd be happy to consider it and probably accommodate the request.
If I may, working with Planning and Zoning, we do request that there's connectivity. I do believe that, that, you know, the existing property owners would, would like to see that not happen. But for safety, I think more than anything, if something would happen that, that the one access is closed, that fire departments and emergency access vehicles have another way as well as residents to get out of an area is imperative. So that's why the connectivity needs to be there. I do have a question if that suffices to, on the plan, though, about two other streets.
Well, my only response was is that typically, I agree with Commissioner Poppins in that typically that is why you have connectivity for the safety issues. But safety is not just a word you can wave your magic wand at and throw your safety card, and that's why something becomes the way it is. If the residents of the community, according to their community standard, say that they don't have a safety concern, and they're saying just the opposite, their safety concern, the higher safety concern is not a fire. Their safety concern is traffic and kids playing and the possibility for when you have larger, longer thoroughfares for people to tend to want to drive faster on those thoroughfares. So there's actually competing safety objectives here, right? It's not just safe versus unsafe. It's competing safety objectives. And what the community has done here, I think, because, you know, they've talked to me, is they've said, hey, look, we don't think the house is going to burn down, but we do think people are going to want to drive faster through the neighborhood if it's connected. So, you know, they've done that risk analysis already in their minds. And this isn't just me coming from on top and saying, oh, jeez, I think it'd be nice to have that disconnected. It's coming from the grassroots, from the bottom up. The community itself is saying, hey, hold on here a minute. We don't want connectivity because of the competing safety issue. So that's why I'm trying to figure out, is that something? It sounds like you haven't taken a position on it, and you're just leaving it up to us.
We were going to discuss it in a future.
Sure.
Meeting, but in, in terms of construction, we don't have, there's no issue. We were in block off anyway, so no, none of the trucks, submit trucks to drive through there anyway.
Sure. No, I think that's, that's a fair answer, and I appreciate it.
And Toby, that would be part of the final planning, would it not?
Yes. So I, I forgot to mention, and I will mention this, is that there is a petition that's been submitted to the county by the landowners, the homeowners association, to vacate Meadowlark. If that is the case, your subdivision ordinance requires additional ingress and egress. So then we would have to go back to Plan A, which is having two means of ingress and egress onto County Highway 106, which our engineer is telling us that's a safety conflict point. But that would have to, we have to, the subdivision we're approving would have to have additional means of ingress and egress, so. But yes, and the homeowners will talk to you about that later, but they have submitted a petition to, to vacate the, a portion of Meadowlark so there would not be any connectivity.
Thank you.
But those would be addressed, to answer your question, those would be addressed at the final development plan stage, so.
Toby, if you would just answer a quick question, your opinion on the Meadowlark Street angling to the adjacent property as well as the other street, Verdi? I'm, I'm a little, I don't know why I would want to have those two streets angling into the adjacent properties, but that could be answered in the final plan, but.
Correct.
Correct.
We had to maintain a one-acre minimum.
Yeah. We may have to work around.
Making that add to be done, you can comment on it.
So.
We, we'd be happy to address that with the final plans.
Very good.
All right.
Next question I, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Next question I had for the applicants is, do you have any objection to having to execute a drainage easement? If you have no, you've articulated substantially that you have no concerns that there will be drainage problems. You've, you've used that rationale in order to get over the hump of, you know, convincing the commission that there's going to be no drainage problems. So since you have no concern and are eminently confident in your plan, do you have any objection to having to execute a drainage easement?
What would the drainage easement be for? Who's, who's getting some benefit from this drainage easement?
Well, the benefit goes towards the existing homeowners who have concerns about drainage issues. And as part of the drainage easement, of course, you know, you'd be liable if there's any water issues that affect them. And you've come here and you've said, hey, our plan is 110%. It's fantastic. So are you willing to commit to a drainage easement?
Hi, I'm John Schwartzley, 27313 Jordan Drive, T. We would have no problem with that.
Okay. So we could incorporate that into the subdivision plan here today?
We could.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody other have any questions for the applicant? If not, and we've been here for quite a while, let me take about a five-minute break, stretch your legs. I need to talk to legal counsel real quick.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. And in the middle of our public hearing, so I would now listen to anybody else who would like to speak in favor of the preliminary plan. All right. If nobody, then I'm going to listen to anybody who wants to speak against the public plan. Please take note that we are taking notice of what was said in the prior public hearing regarding the rezone. So I don't feel that there's any need for anybody to repeat themselves on those issues. But again, this is a public hearing, so if you want to, you certainly can. Anybody want to come up?
Since the map is up here, I, I went around with Gus yesterday, and he, they showed me a bunch of nice-looking properties. There's a significant difference between the properties they're developing in T. And any of you are welcome to go look at those. These retention ponds are.
Sir, can you, can you say your name and address?
Owen Postma, 27097 Prairie Hills Trail.
Thank you.
These retention ponds are kind of tucked off in the corner, so it's nobody's problem. If I wanted to have, if, from my end, I'm as close to the big retention pond, 2.5 acres, 18 feet deep, 11 to 15 million gallons of water, as any of these prospective homebuyers are. The other properties, the retention pond is smack dab in the middle. I like the idea of everybody shitting their pants that water is kind of flow out of that retention pond and screw their house up. But instead, we've got one house with a shared border, two houses with a shared border, and then I have a shared road, and we all have shared road up there. But I just, I don't understand. I looked at seven retention ponds, everybody's house backed up to the retention pond out here, two. And that just doesn't make me feel, as somebody that doesn't have a say in the social way, that they're going to care as much because their backyard isn't a lake. And so I would, I just would be curious to know why such a drastic difference. If it's a sales point in T, why is it not a sales point out in the country? And, and then the other thing, the map that existed earlier, you can see there was like seven wet spots. But what, and there's, there was a line cutting right down the middle that I would imagine is the high point. But yet everything is flowing from the east into the largest retention pond. And to call myself an engineer would be falsehood. But I, I just don't understand if that's, if that's the high point in the middle, why not, you know, split the water more equally, or why drain it from the east all the way to the west when there was a heavy concentration in the northeast and the southeast, basically everywhere, but that's about it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Colin Adam again, 47975 Meadowlark Street. Won't repeat myself there. Just one comment on the road abandonment that we discussed here with Gibbon team and Joel as well. That petition will be on the table coming up in the middle of June. And so I'd be looking at, I, I would be a proponent for, you know, having another entrance onto 271 and not having that through traffic. So just know that. So just know that is on the table. Like Commissioner Aaron's mentioned, safety and through traffic and a fire emergency is not a concern. We got 22 out of 25, 26 signees on that. So we very much like to keep our neighborhood orderly and I think it's in the best interest of both our new neighbors that we're going to have as well as us to block that off, you know, keep it to walking, bikes, not vehicles riding through. 271 is plenty busy. Making a thoroughfare a parallel that people will cut on is a challenge. So I'd be looking to that other option that Toby mentioned to maybe open that up onto 271 and hopefully you'll take a look at our petition coming up here too. So just comment there, they have been very consistent with their answers and I appreciate that from John and Gibb of, hey, they're open to whatever is required, but also are very open to being good neighbors and self-contained, just like every single other HOA in this area. So thank you very much for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come up? If not, we'll close the testimony.
Any other question for staff?
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Toby, am I under correct understanding that if Metal Arc is closed and we require a second access onto 271st, that would pretty much, is not possible to have two up there, is that correct?
It's possible, it's not preferred.
It is possible, though?
Yes.
Okay. And the reason it's not preferred is because of safety or?
Safety, it's 55 miles an hour between those two driveway entrances.
If the, can I?
Go ahead.
I thought maybe.
No, I'm done. That answers my question. Thank you.
So if the speed limit were changed, now that it is a growing, you know, rural residential development with a substantial number of houses, doesn't it stand to reason then we'd have to lower the speed limit? And then if you lowered the speed limit, then it would be okay with two entrances?
So the highway superintendent and I would have to talk about this to begin with, is that he may require a traffic impact study because of this proposed development. If that's the case, that would identify potential speed limits, potential other types of improvements that the county highway would have to be done with.
Because the two entrances were only analyzed from the perspective of 55 miles per hour, there weren't other alternatives looked at, were there?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Right.
Thank you.
Follow-up question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there any reason that, given the request that's coming up in June, that we would have to defer a decision on this preliminary plan at this time, Toby? Because I do think that one versus two access is pretty significant to the plan.
Yeah, you know, shooting from the hip, the other part is the planning commission denied this application, so we'd have to go back to the planning commission and believe it sometime too. So, you know, probably more than likely would have to come back to you a second time, so.
Can I make a comment?
I've closed testimony, but I'll reopen it, come on up.
I was just talking, John Schwartzley, 27313 Jordan Drive, just talking to Pat and he said that, is it a rule or is it an ordinance, under 30 lots, you only require one access? We wouldn't have to require a second access onto 271st.
I'm not going to get into the legalities of the access point.
Fire code says that you can have up to 30 single-family residences with one access.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments among the commission?
I have one thing.
All right, one more.
Well, just only because I, we worked, Dave and I met with Terry, the field, the traffic manager, and this drawing was originally drawn with two entrances, keeping Metal Arc in place. And we talked about lowering the traffic speed. So if you talk about timing and shelving this to the June meeting, we already have the drawing drawn with those changes. We changed it and removed it. So, and we had our meeting with Terry and I have a letter from him approving the drawing. But then Toby, we got, we had a meeting and he came back and said that the engineer said no. So he overrode Terry's decision when we had already had it drawn that way. So that's just all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's why they're calling it a preliminary plan.
Yeah.
All right, so we're closing testimony on this. Commissioners, can I get a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make the following motion. We approve, move to approve the preliminary subdivision plan, subject to the conditions imposed by planning and zoning, but also subject to the following condition, that the developer executed drainage easement in favor of the adjacent neighbors.
Will you repeat that, Commissioner Aaron's?
Yeah. The developer has to execute a drainage easement in favor of the adjacent neighbors. So both to the, well, all adjacent neighbors. So the drainage easement would apply to any downstream, adjacent downstream residents. And then I think the other issue that still, this isn't a part of my motion, I'll just stand right there.
Okay, so let's leave it at that and then is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Further discussion, Commissioner Aaron's, is there something you wanted to say?
Sure. I think from an administrative point of view, we've kind of thrown off course by the comment that this has to go back before the planning and zoning commission. So I just want to tease that out a little bit. Regardless of what we do here today, Toby, this has to go back in front of planning and zoning?
The preliminary plan requires them to approve it. It's not a recommendation, it's an approval by the planning commission. They've denied it.
Okay. So regardless of what we do, so let's say we pass this thing here today, what happens next? Does it go back in front of them or not?
Yes.
Okay. And so when it goes back in front of them, the developers can come back in and present this issue of two entrances versus one, as well as the speed limit issue and all of that at that time?
I guess I would probably present the approval of the board of commissioners and ask for their concurrence in that.
Okay.
And then at that stage, again, this is the preliminary plan, the highway superintendent, myself, emergency management director, we review final development plans, so there might be additional requirements that would be stipulated onto it as far as the access.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I have seconded it.
Oh, you did, didn't you? Awesome. All right.
So repeat the motion then, please.
The motion is to approve the applicant's plan with the standard terms and conditions imposed by planning and zoning, but also that the developer is required to execute a drainage easement in favor of all adjacent neighbors.
Call the question, Madam Chair.
Sherry, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Melissa Carey's. We'll move on to item five on our agenda.
We need to reschedule the June 7th commission meeting to June 9th due to the primary election.
All right. And I know that I have a court hearing that morning, so I would not be able to be here.
Okay, because we'll be, and we'll be doing the canvassing then on the night.
Everybody else can make it, just so we have a quorum.
I want to go somewhere.
All right. Can you get a motion?
So move, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Schmidt, second by Poppins. Sherry, call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Item six.
Oh, what's that mean? Wait a minute.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a approval to authorize termination, then subsequently also a new ground lease agreement, basically a transfer of the holding out at the airport. If we bring the overhead camera above, I can show you which hangar that is. It is I-2, which I have circled for you.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sherry, call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Move on to item seven.
Looking for authorization to sign, for the chair to sign a contract with the architecture firm that was the, ordered the bid that we put out a couple of weeks ago. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer what I can for you on the contract.
Anybody have any questions? If not, I'd consider a motion.
Bill, was the, I'm having just a little bit of hesitation with this, not because of the substance of it, but I couldn't access the contract over the weekend. Now, I don't, maybe that was just my computer, I don't know if it was the Dropbox, you know, the system. So I couldn't see it, but what I'm wondering is, was it, was it, so first of all, I got to ask, is it available for public consumption right now or not? And maybe that was the issue.
It will be, I would say this is final contract negotiations at this point, so I think it is a public document and it is available to the public now, since it's for your consideration. Because it is a final document, it is final negotiations.
Sure. So, okay. I'm just saying I wasn't able to access it and I didn't know if it was my computer or if it was our, the Drop, not Dropbox, but the server from the county here. So that was the only hesitation I had with it. And I didn't know if others had that same problem or not.
I can, if we want to take a short break, I can get a printed copy and bring it to you.
Yeah, I think we need to address it, but I was having that issue just today, trying to pull it up. It just kept spinning on the computer, so.
I just pulled it up without.
I haven't seen it either.
So do you want me to print it from here?
Why don't you print?
I've got mine up, so I don't need a paper copy. It is in your share file.
Madam Chair, are you asking for it to get printed then for everybody?
Who wants a paper copy? It's in the share file.
Yeah, I can't. I'm locked out of my account here right now, which is fine, but if somebody has a copy.
Yep, I'm trying to, I don't.
Madam Chair, would you entertain taking item, the next item then while they're doing that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have that property, which was a proposed site for a potential public safety facility that we have surplus, have, are in the process of marketing. We need to take care of that property, we considered and then chose not to rent it out, which I think is still valid. I did speak with a couple of individuals about taking care of that property and what the best option is. For information, there are two individuals that I spoke with that gave rates to cultivate it, possibly plant it, and if we did try, have possession, could harvest the crop if we put a cover crop of soybeans or something on there. I'm just looking to see if there's any direction from the board as to how to proceed. We need to take care of it, in which it needs to get turned black. In the past, I have donated my services on the record, not doing that ever again. So we need to look at another alternative to maintain that. If you ask for a recommendation, it would be have it cultivated, have it planted, hire an elevator to spray it, and if it makes it to market, then we would be able to combine it. I would ask that we find a, either it goes into our general fund budget or we find a services such as 4H that's constantly looking in for funds as well. But we must maintain it and this gives us an opportunity to maybe recoup some of the costs of maintaining that property. Thank you.
Commissioner Poppins, that's a total of, how many acres is that? That would be tillable.
It is tillable 40 plus or minus acres up there.
I like your idea that we could certainly give the option to the 4H group if they wish to have kind of a community approach to this thing. It would be the revenue that would be generated, for example, as you stated, a soybean crop. And if they stood the expenses and would get the revenue, that might be an additional source to help them recover from the building that was blown down. So I don't know if you, what kind of action you're looking for, but that would be one recommendation that I think we should follow.
The advantage of doing it this way is that it'd still be under our control, so if something happened and, or when it does sell and they want immediate possession, we don't have an issue of tenant to have to deal with, so.
That's correct. So would you take the, would you take the responsibility of contacting the 4H or Wendy Sweeter and to see?
If the board wants to direct an individual, and I would volunteer to do that.
Okay. Good.
Let's do that. So as far as board action, should we just table that, not take action until we have somebody, you have something concrete for us to?
Well, I have numbers as to what it would cost to cultivate a planet, so if you wanted to do that, if you wanted to go see if the 4H want to take the responsibility of the fees ahead of time?
They'd have to take, they'd have to full responsibility. What was your numbers, Commissioner?
Your, so cultivation, I have two different numbers, $19 and $20 an acre, planting 21, 25, combining 40 plus X cents bushel versus $60 flat rate. The one individual is an adjacent property owner that actually has rented this in the past. I would, you know, I would concur that he probably would have the best interest in the county to make sure that it got taken care of properly. But our biggest concern is not to have a pending lease out there, and that would be the same thing on the 4H, though. If they started funding it, we'd, they'd want to, I would think, we must maintain it. We are going to spend X amount of money to cultivate it, spray it anyway. This is an opportunity to generate some revenue from it, and as long as legal counsel doesn't tell me that we can't do that, I would recommend that we do that.
Commissioner Poppins, I got a question for you. Sounds like a good plan. Let's say that plan doesn't work for whatever reason. You know, a couple of years ago, our weed board spent like 15,000 to buy this really expensive sprayer and everything. Can we internally resource this without having to hire out spraying on 40 acres or not?
If we're looking at not planting a crop on there, absolutely. If we're looking at trying to generate some revenue from it, I would highly recommend that we contract with the, one of the local providers for that.
Sure.
You're, but the same token, everyone needs to be on the record. We could be, we're going to spend X amount, it might be $50 an acre to just to keep it clean, versus we're looking at maybe $200 an acre to work it, put a crop on it, for everyone's record. Soybean prices are currently 14 some odd dollars. If you generate 30 or 40 bushels an acre, you're looking at 450, $500 of revenue per acre if it goes to market. It's a decision, do you want to try to put a crop on it or just keep it clean? So, clear?
Mr. Poppins, given the fact that if we ask the 4H people to provide all of that, I don't know that they have the resources to be able to put a crop in. So your neighbor or the person that you rented it to seems like the most likely candidate. So your neighbor or the person that you rented it to seems like the most likely candidate.
Okay, I, I would recommend that we not get into a contract, in essence, with the 4H for them to be responsible, because then, in essence, that is us renting it to them, and what, that is what we're trying to avoid, so. The biggest question at this point is, do we just keep it clean, clear weeds and all that? Or do we go ahead and since it is farmland, have someone plant a crop to it? We have enough farmers on this board to make that decision, so.
I'd like to see it farmed. I'd like to see it farmed.
You're okay with expending X amount of, could be, like I said, two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars, put a crop into it with the potential of getting all of that and then some back?
We all know what prevent plant acres looked like in 2019.
So, at this point, I would need authorization to approve a expenditure of twenty dollars an acre to have it cultivated, twenty-five dollars an acre to have it planted, and about sixty dollars an acre for the soybean seed.
Thank you. Is that your motion?
I will move for that, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes, second.
Can you, Sherry, call the roll?
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mike, will you be able to give me that piece of paper you're looking at?
I'll give you them both, so, for the record, but.
Thank you.
Ethan, are you gonna handle the next one? You want to come up and do that? We're probably gonna, I know we've got another executive session, and we've got to come back and talk about this architect contract, which might take a little while, so go ahead.
All right, good morning. Item number seven is for an abatement. So the applicant.
Item nine, you mean?
Yes, my apologies, item nine. The applicant did submit an application for an abatement. It's related to the veteran's exemption, a hundred fifty thousand dollar assessment exemption. However, according to South Dakota law, the, the date that the an applicant for this exemption would need to be exempt, would have to be in accordance with the South Dakota assessment date of November 1st of each year. And you do have to provide documentation showing when you were approved for this disability from the VA. We do have that paperwork, and it, it was after the assessment date of November 1st. So my recommendation would be to deny this application for the abatement. And subsequently, you know, they will be eligible to apply for that exemption for the following years. So, for example, if it came after November 1st of 2021, then they would be eligible for the 2023 year.
And so when can they apply for that, and have you told them that?
Anytime before November 1st. It's right on the application that they've already applied for, so.
And they don't need to apply every year, is that correct?
No, once, once approved, it's good until a person moves or, or sells, or applies in another, at another location.
They have applied already.
Correct.
And it's the application itself that needs to be submitted by?
It's, it's the abatement that we're discussing today.
Right, so the application itself needs to be submitted by November 15th or 1st, you said?
First.
When did you get it?
It appears to me that this came during equalization boards this year, and so the application for the exemption was late, but approved by the equalization board. And so that will be for the, well, so that's the application for the exemption. Excuse, yeah, and that's for the 2022 year, which I believe is approved at this point because the equal, the equalization board approved getting this application. However, now this abatement is retroactive, so this is for the twenty twenty-twenty-one payable, twenty-twenty-two taxes. This, thank you, Sherry. This, so there's, there's two separate things, and all, all we're working on today is the abatement. I don't, I think we're straying off the point a little bit with this exemption application.
Okay.
So that's gonna be handled without the board's approval. The exemption is for the 2020 payable, the abatement, I'm sorry, is for the 2020 payable.
So we granted the?
Twenty, twenty-twenty-one payable, twenty-twenty-two taxes.
So we granted the exemption itself already?
For the 2022 assessment year payable 2023.
So he's going, he's going back and requesting abatement for last year's taxes?
Oh, okay.
He didn't get the qualification from the VA until after December 1st.
So in order for him to have this application and, and avoid the abatement, he would have had to apply for this November 1st of 2020, and he would have had to have the letter from the VA at that point. The letter from the VA didn't come from, until December of last year.
Okay, thank you.
And this has all been vetted with the SOR officer.
I got a question here, Ethan. I'm looking at SDCL 10-4-40. And it says in here, and I, and I could be mistaken, but I just want to read this out to the board. "Any veteran who would otherwise qualify for this exemption but fails to comply with the application deadline for the owner occupied classification or the deadline for application for this exemption may petition the Board of County Commissioners to recalculate the taxes based upon the owner occupied classification and this exemption and abate or refund the difference in taxes pursuant to Chapter 10-18." So doesn't that actually allow him to abate based upon, or receive a prorated amount based upon when he did receive it?
Yes, and that's exactly why he was able to apply for this exemption, and the board, equalization board approved it back in March, because he was approved in December, and this.
Just, if you don't mind, Ethan.
Yeah.
So he was, through the VA, he was claimed 100% disabled on December 1st, which was after the November 1st deadline, so he wouldn't have qualified under that SDCL. He would not have qualified for the veteran's exemption because he did not qualify through the VA at the time.
But that goes against the plain reading of the statute here.
But he didn't qualify.
Did he not qualify, or he just didn't get the?
No, he did not qualify. He was not qualified through the VA until after December 1st. He had to been qualified through the VA before November 1st.
So the date had nothing to do with it? Or he did not?
The qualification.
So, for example, this law would apply had he been approved by the VA in October and had not applied until March. You could approve that and say, well, otherwise, besides this being a late application, he was approved by the VA, but it's not October, it was December.
So the date of his qualification is December, correct?
Yep.
And that means that he would qual, under the plain reading of this statute, he qualified for at least one month of the year then, right?
For the 2022 payable 2023.
Wouldn't he, it says in the statute, he's, he may abate or refund the difference in taxes. So wouldn't it be effective the date of when he qualified? It says right here, he can abate it.
I, we can abate it, yeah.
Yeah, we can, the board can. I mean, the board doesn't have to, but if the law allows us to do so, why would you recommend denial of that?
Because we're getting the years a little mixed up. You're, you're talking the current year and.
It's a whole year off. He wants to go back and get an abatement from before he was qualified, like more than a year. Is that how I'm understanding it?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
So even though that's what he wants, what we're authorized to provide is instead of twelve months, one month.
I think if he had applied for that, I think we could.
Well, he.
I don't, do we have the discretion to set, offer a different abatement amount or term than what his request is?
I'll read this again. "Any veteran who would otherwise qualify for this exemption but fails to comply with the application deadline for the owner occupied classification or the deadline for application for this exemption may petition the Board of County Commissioners to recalculate the taxes based upon the owner occupied classification and this exemption and abate or refund the difference in taxes pursuant to 10-18." So he made a full application. We could, we're not, you know, we could say, look, you're not entitled to the full application, but you're entitled to one month of the application. So we can abate one month out of the twelve. I get that he's asking for a full year. He's not entitled to the full year, but he's entitled to thirty days or whenever the data classify.
I think that, the way I'm, the way I'm listening, and I'm not looking at the statute, but it's talking about a lateness of an application.
Exactly.
What the issue is here is that his actual qualification wasn't, didn't occur until December. So it doesn't, absolutely, we could abate it if it was just an application issue. But he wasn't, he would not have otherwise qualified at the time, is where I'm getting hit. That's where I'm getting hooked up at.
But he does, he does qualify for, his, his application was approved in December. He would qualify for one month out of that year, though, so we could abate that, right?
So this would, that month you're referring to is December of 2021.
Okay.
So that means going forward, and at that point, we're in the 2022 assessment year, because we're past November 1st of 2021. So he would have had to apply a month and eight days prior to the approval of his letter in order to meet the deadline for the 2022 payable 2023. And that's completely aside from what we're discussing today, which is the year prior to this, and that is what he is asking to abate.
So he wants to abate 2020?
Right, payable 21, but he didn't qualify until December of 21.
Does his application cover?
2021 payable 2022.
Right.
Could we abate 21, though, based upon the date of his application, uh, classification from the VA?
He wasn't qualified until December 2021, so you're back to the one month of taxes.
Right.
So what is his, do you have his abatement application?
Yeah.
He's by all rights entitled to one month of an abatement. Yeah.
Yeah, I have it. So that's two hundred and seventeen dollars?
Well, if that's what the math is.
I don't know where this.
I'm getting the gist that there's somebody that wants to make a motion.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sherry, you call the roll.
So we're just gonna recalculate it, we're gonna divide the taxes by twelve and then take one month off?
Correct.
Yes.
And then we'll have to send that through the city also, right, Ethan, to get approval? It's a city one. So that was Joel, and who is?
Poppins.
Poppins, okay. Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. All right, we got a couple of things that we need to address. We're gonna circle back to item seven, and then we also need another executive session. Has everybody had a chance to look at the contract from GLG?
Yes. Twelve-speed reading, yes.
No, no, I'm going back through the page I was on in case I need to read from it. The answer is yes, Madam Chair. And, and for the record, I had an opportunity to consult with Mr. Golden as well to answer a couple of questions about the disclaimer on the front. And I don't know if your final copies showed the, showed this disclaimer under additions and additions, and that, I'm not going to read from them because that may be privileged information. But I, I can answer the question, though, and tell people that, especially for the public who is, who is listening and may be interested in this process, Dick Strasberg did provide his input. He stated publicly that typically architects and engineers like you to use a contract that is a form contract, and typically a form contract is written kind, somewhat biased towards the, the entity, like the engineer or the architect. And the whole reason we hired Mr. Strasberg and Tegra Group was to take those typical form contracts and to go in there and tweak everything towards the benefit of the county. And that has been done in this instance. So Mr. Strasberg has provided the benefit that we asked for. And there's some writing on this agreement here that states as much. And, but the writing is, it looks like it's some edits by whoever the drafter of the, from our side was. And I just wanted, I think all that can be disclosed, and I wanted the public to know that before we, you know, vote on this.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for counsel about the contract?
Madam Chair, all the questions I had are addressed earlier with counsel and staff, so thank you. I'm good to go.
With that, I consider a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve and authorize Chair to execute contract with GLG Architects for Services on Lincoln County Justice Center.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Just so the public knows this, and this is important. What this contract is for is a new ground up, this is a contract for services that will be provided for a new ground up facility that may consist of all or some of the following components, such as courts, state's attorney's office, clerk of courts, public defender judge's office, sheriff's office, other related courts and county offices. The program will be defined during the feasibility study. The, and this is an important statement right here for the public. "The size and design will fluctuate depending upon final programming and budgeting." So no decision is made today with regard to what new courthouse or justice center may look like. This is simply the contract to provide the services to start designing it.
Thank you for that comment, and that's correct. This isn't for any particular design structure or anything of that sort, it's just to begin that process and work toward, toward getting something put together that we can all look at. So I do have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sherry, you call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Motion carries. And I just need a motion to go into executive session.
So move, Madam Chair.
That would be under SDCL 125-2 sub 1 and 125-2 sub 3. Is that your motion, Commissioner?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Sherry?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. Thank you. Brandy, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Brandy, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
Yes. We adjourn. Thank you, everybody.